Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We are. We're also really glad that Julie and Colin are joining us today. You guys.
Hi everyone.
How's it going everybody?
So go ahead and head into the chat if you're joining us here live. We're excited to have you. Today we're talking about how to plan your next month's worth of content. Content is something that your business absolutely needs. And what content looks like for your business may not be what you think it is. As a brand partner, we usually think about content as something that educates our customers. And while this is an important category of content, and even more important category of content, is the content that attracts your future customers to you. And so the conversations that you're leading need to be a little bit different. And of course, the ways that you put yourself out there really matter because that's how you establish first impressions. And it's also how you reinforce how people see you so that people might choose to remember you as their go-to, as somebody that they can seek out when they are looking for help. And of course, we know that just about everybody on the planet can be helped by Young Living products. So today we're going to get into what it looks like to plan out our content so that this is something that doesn't take a ton of time, but that does deliver a big impact to your business. So we're going to pop out a video and get into some slides that I've put together for you guys. Excited to get into this with you. And we're going to do some walkthroughs and some actual like, I'm going to show you how this works, right? Live. And there's a checklist that I sent to you in your email. If you have not received it already, definitely take a look there. And yeah, let's get into it. We're going to talk about how to plan an entire month of content in less than an hour. So today we're going to talk about what that looks like. And we're going to prepare for next week where we'll follow up on this, where we will get into what it looks like to publish and syndicate or share your content so that it gets out there to the world. And then of course, we'll get into some live help and Q and A as always. If you have questions, please do go ahead, add those to the Q and A here on the live call. This is always a fantastic opportunity for you to meet your community. And really more importantly, get help from us if you need help with something, even if it doesn't have to do with today's subject. I want to invite you to put that question into the Q and A and we'll take care of you here on the call. If you would like to join us in the future for a live call like this one, take advantage of live support and be the first to get resources that we share. Go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to get on the list. And we will let you know about our upcoming topics and share resources with you. If you'd like to work together on a call like this one, it's totally free. If you use Get Oiling and you need some help, the second half of these weekly live Thursday calls, it's every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time. The second half of these calls is dedicated to working with you guys one-on-one for as much as you need inside of the hour. So getoiling.com/webstatereview if you would like to specifically reserve space to work on whatever you need help with. And then finally, if you would like for our team to get some of the work done for you, that's an option as well. Getoiling.com/conceierge is where you want to go to learn about your options. Now today, we're going to be using some tools. Now, this is going to potentially be familiar to you. If you use Get Oiling, we have a Write With AI feature. And we're going to use Write With AI to generate titles for our blog content, so the body text of our blog and our excerpts. We'll also use the Trello swipe file that we created and set up in a previous training. So last week we talked about about swiping ideas and inspiration from around the web. This week, we are talking about taking that inspiration and planning out and turning that into content in a streamlined way that is easy to follow and doesn't take a ton of time, right? So we're going to use that Trello swipe file and we're going to use Canva so that we can create consistent branded graphics. And again, there's a template for you. It's already thought out. You don't have to worry about what size it is or whatever. And I'll walk you through that here today. If you want to catch up, last week's training was on how to create and use a swipe file where we shared a free Trello board that you can use to plan your content and capture inspiration. So we'll be utilizing that here today. So the first thing that we are going to do is generate blog titles. All right. So the first thing we need to do is figure out what are we going to be talking about? Now, real quick, your blog is a very important feature that a lot of folks are not really using to its biggest potential with Get Oiling. You get access to this no matter what plan you have. And a blog allows you to put yourself out there for the world to see in a way that's substantive, right? So we're talking about greater depth than you can get into on social media, for instance. And creating blog content also importantly sets you apart from everybody else with an opinion or a suggestion on the internet that uses social media, which is basically everybody. So if you want to stand out and you want people to start perceiving you differently as a go-to, creating content is a really important piece of that. So what we need to do is come up with some ideas for what we are going to create blog posts about. Now you may already be creating some lists of ideas on your Trello board. Hopefully you guys have have been utilizing that. But we're going to use AI to make our lives just a little bit easier here today. So we're going to use that swipe file from last week to identify blog ideas. And then we're going to give our AI in Get Oiling a prompt, right? And here's the prompt I'm going to provide. You'll find this in a copy pasteable format on your checklist that I've given you. And Greg has actually put that into our chat as well. For those of you watching the replay, this will be in the description. Plug this in the way that it best communicates you. This is an example. I'm a wellness influencer. You could say you're a wellness enthusiast. You could say you're a wellness coach if that's true about you. Who helps first-time moms and moms of young kids? Again, if that's not who you helps, which that out here. Take control of their family's wellness with easy to implement steps and safe natural products. Generate a list of five blog post titles. Use a fun, friendly tone. So this is an example of a really great prompt that you can give Write With AI in Get Oiling that will help give you some ideas for your next posts. So I'm actually going to go and demonstrate this for you guys live. So bear with me. Let me change my share up here and I will show you exactly how we will do that. All right. So I've got two windows open here. Right here I'm in Get Oiling. Where I am in Write With AI, which is right here under the Start Here menu. Okay? And I'm going to grab from my from my checklist that prompt. I'm going to copy it. And I'm going to come right back over here and I am going to paste it in right here. Now again, you're going to want to modify this to your liking. Make sure that it suits who you are. Now you may already have on this Trello board, which again, I went over this in last week's training. So you may want to revisit that if you haven't been capturing your ideas here yet. But what I'm going to do here is I'm going to get some suggestions from Write With AI in Get Oiling. After we ask it to write, it'll give it just a couple of minutes. All right. So here, let's take a look at this. Mama's Magic Toolkit: Essential Oils Every First Time Mom Shouldn't Be Without. Snipples and Sleepless Nights: Natural Solutions to Keep Your Little Ones Happy. From Chaos to Calm: How to Create a Zen Zone for Your Busy Family with Young Living. I don't love that one. I'll tell you why in just a moment. Ditch the Harsh Chemicals: Fresh and Safe Ways to Keep Your Home Sparkling. And then finally, Mini Me Time: Quick Self-Care Rituals for Busy Moms Using Essential Oils. Okay, so let's take a look at what's here and what we love about it and what we don't. Okay? Now first, for the person that I have told them I am, I think it's done a pretty good job here. It has utilized a fun and friendly tone. I like that. The problem here is that it is focusing just perhaps a little bit too hard on essential oils. And importantly, I don't want my blog post to talk about Young Living specifically. Or at least most of the time I don't, right? Every now and then might be okay. If there is no better way to explain, you know, let's just say for instance, a signature product of Young Living's that can't really be replicated anywhere else. So like Thebes, for instance, or Ningsha. There may be cause for you to mention those products on your blog. But if the title of the blog is about Young Living, I'm not really speaking to somebody who doesn't know Young Living yet, am I? No, that's for somebody who actually cares about Young Living and what it is. Nobody cares about Young Living and what it is until they know what it is and what it can do for them. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a modification to this prompt here. And I'm going to say, I'm going to say, do not specifically focus these topics on Young Living or its products. These posts are intended to generate curiosity and trust in me and my perspective before I eventually introduce Young Living to leads. All right, I'm going to copy this because I know you guys are going to want to ask for this. I'm going to copy this right now and go ahead and put it into our chat if you want to grab this. If you don't love the feedback that you get, then you can put this in here as well. So I'm going to click right. And let's see what it looks like with our next iteration. Here we go. Mommy Magic: Seven Natural Ways to Boost Your Family's Wellness Routine Even With a Toddler on the Loose. I love that. Sippy Cups and Serenity: Essential Self-Care Tips for Busy Moms. Tiny Toes: Big Smiles Creating a Stress-Free Environment for Your Little Ones. From Chaos to Zen: How to Find Your Mom Groove Using Natural Simple Hacks. And Mom's Secret Weapon: The Whole Family Guide to a Healthier, Happier Home. Beautiful. I love this so much. Here's what I'm going to do next. All right. Let me switch back over here. We've generated our blog post titles. All right. Yes, right? Aren't those fabulous titles, right? And you can get that from Get Oiling. All right. So the next thing that we're going to want to do, oops, let's come back over here. From your checklist, you'll see that the first thing that you need to do after you grab these titles is you want to go over to your Trello board and you want to pop them in as, oops. Here we go. Sorry, I need to switch my share here. And there we go. Okay. All right. So what we need to do now is take these and put them into idea cards on our Trello board. So remember, one of these, I, so we have different things that we're collecting on our Trello board, right? So we've got what we're working on right now. That's our drafts in progress. We've got the stuff that we have maybe already published. And then we've got things that we plan to work on. So we'll get to this section here in just a bit. But importantly, when we're using our swipe file and we want to collect ideas that we want to act on in the future, that we want to put them into their different categories of content. So we've got email content. We've got social media post content. We've got long form content such as blog posts, longer YouTube videos or podcast episodes. And then we have website copy and design ideas. If you're somebody who does physical product stuff, maybe swag is something you want to put there. This is not an example. I think that's applicable to most Young Living folks though. So here's our long form content and swag, this, by the way, I was, I added this as a, an example in another training. Not really applicable. It's not going to show up on the Trello board that you claimed from us. Here's what you're going to do. We're going to go to long form content, this one right here. And we're going to utilize this template card to create a new one. And we're going to grab our blog post titles. And we're going to put these in here as ideas. So I'm going to go right here, create from template, long form content template. And I'm going to paste that title right there. Create. Voila. I'm going to go ahead and in here and change the label to blog. There we go. And it's maybe this is my content silo three. It's about wellness routines, right? So maybe my content silo three is wellness routines. Let me put that in here. Okay. So it's about wellness routines and it's a blog post. Beautiful. Okay. I'm going to keep doing this, right? So let's go ahead and grab these others. Sippy Cups and Serenity: Essential Self-Care Tips. Great. So I'm going to copy that. And I'm going to again, this is going to be a blog post. Paste that in, create the card. I'm going to again, add some labels to it. I planned for this to be a blog post. Maybe I talk about self-care. And that's one of my content silos. So I'm going to go ahead and label this self-care. That's a top level theme that I talk about often. So I'm going to make sure that that is here as well. Great. Let's keep going. Well, I'm going to use that template again. Let's go find this one. Copy and paste, right? Again, pretty simple. And we're just repeating this process again, making sure that you're applying the labels to them. Because that's going to help you filter in the future. However, you plan to use this content, you'll be able to see how it's been used. And of course, if you're looking for things that you have talked about or want to talk about that fall into a particular category, such as in this case, wellness routines or babies or self-care. If those are things that you plan to talk about a lot, then you can search your, your board for those ideas. All right. So again, I'm just going to go ahead and pop in here that these are blog posts so that this is organized. All right. Now, we've got our ideas in here and you can actually do more than this. You can ask, if you're going to be spending the time to do this anyway, why not go ahead and get 20 things that are ideas and have them in here? So that you're, you've got a starting point to work from in the future, right? There's no reason why what I just did, which is really just asking some questions, deciding what I like, then copying and pasting over into this, right? Do more of this, right? Do more than just five. Because then what you're going to do is you're going to decide what you want to publish next, right? And so then you're going to be taking these ideas and we're going to move them over here to our content ideas. So I'm ready to maybe start planning for what I'm going to work on. So I'm going to come over here and I'm going to drag the ones that I know I'm going to be using next. Right? So these are the ones I want to work on publishing. I'm going to drag them over to my content ideas. And again, if you have a ton of stuff here, then you've got a lot to choose from, right? So definitely follow this process in a scaled up way to save yourself more time in the future. All right. So once I've got everything over here, it's time to move on to the next step. I know those are the things that I want to focus on next. So next, what we're going to do is draft the body of our blog posts. So we're going to be using again, a prompt example that I've provided for you. You're going to want to edit this to your liking and maybe add that disclaimer that I provided as well. And I'll make sure to put that into the description of this video as well. For those of you watching this as a replay, asking AI to not specifically focus on Young Living or its products because it does know that you're a brand partner and it kind of does want to talk about Young Living. And so where you don't want it to, you want to make sure that you're specific about that. All right. So our Write With AI prompt example is I'm a wellness influencer. Again, change this to what you are. Who helps first-time moms, moms of young kids, take control of their family's wellness with easy to implement steps and safe natural products. Write a 1,000-word blog post titled, and you paste the title, one of the ones that we just came up with. And then we're telling it to include a call to action to schedule a free wellness consult call. Use a fun and friendly tone. And I want you to think about this, right? Especially for those of you who have been around, you know, any amount of our content or training for a period of time. The purpose of creating a blog post like this is not just to feel good about having written some tips and shared them with the world. We want somebody who likes what they hear to say, oh, I want to learn more from this person. We want somebody who likes what you have to say, who identifies with you to see that there is a way for them to connect with you so that you can help them solve their problems, make their life easier. And you can of course, connect them with your suggestions, right? This isn't about selling Young Living on autopilot. It's about getting leads to us who are excited to hear what we have to recommend to them on autopilot, right? So let's go take a look at what this looks like. Again, going back to our Write With AI and Get Oiling and our, and our swipe file. So back over here, I am going to grab that example prompt and copy it from the checklist. And then I'm going to come right back over here. And I'm going to leave this right here. I want you to potentially use this here as well. This do not specifically focus these topics on Young Living products and except I'm going to say this post. Right? Okay. So let me come back up here. I'm going to paste. And remember, I do need to paste my blog post title, right? So I'm going to use this one. So copy. That's needs a parentheses. All right. Copy that. And paste your title here. There we go. I've got everything I need. Let's have it right. And it's going to come up with a thousand-word blog post. You want to take a look at it, see if you like it, see if it resonates with you. If it does, then what we're going to do is we are going to pop it into this, into this card, right? So I'm not going to be able to read all of this right here just for the sake of time. But I'm going to go ahead and just copy all of this right here. There we go. Copy and paste. Look at that. Look at that. Oof, I love it. It's already just nicely formatted. It's good to go. It's right here. It's ready for me when I need it, right? So go ahead and just paste what it has in here. Read through it. See if you like it. Maybe, you know, if you don't like a paragraph, you can pop it in here and say, I'd like for this to talk more about X or Y, change it up for me. And now you've got something to start from, right? So go ahead and build the beginning of your draft here. Or if you like what it has to say and you've got it all ready to go, you feel like this is good, then you want to save it. Now really quick here. We are not going to be using things like name tags, right? Because this is a blog post. It's not going to talk about their name. We are going to make some, some adjustments here where that's concerned. And take a look at the call to action, right? So what we're going to do here is take a look here's where it says, click here to schedule your free wellness consult call. This is where you would be able to link them to book a call with you. It could be if you have a wellness consult funnel, like we've talked about on previous calls, that it might be something that you link to right there. If you offer a different type of lead magnet that you would prefer to place here in lieu of a call with you, you could certainly link to that landing page here instead, right? So be thinking about that. If you want to make a note for yourself, where we might say, link to Ningsha Education funnel instead of a discovery call or wellness consult. You can put that here. Save that for yourself. So you've got this note, right? Because again, we're not going to publish right now. We're just getting this ready. And so we're going to repeat that, right? For, for each of the posts that you have titled here. Okay. So again, let me grab this one, Mom's Secret Weapon. Copy this title. And I'm just going to swap this out. Paste. And have it right. And I'm going to repeat this for each one. I want you to repeat this for each one. I'm not going to do it for every single one for the sake of time here, but I will be doing it after we're done with today's call because next week, we're going to be getting back together. And we will actually publish these in Get Oiling, which is pretty exciting. And I did already do this and this and this, right? Oh, and the other important thing, once you've added this, go ahead and move your card over to the drafts in progress, right? I'm working on this one right now. So this one, I'm also going to move over here because I now have my blog post copy. So I'm going to copy that. I'm going to paste it in here. There you go. Beautiful. Again, it's got that call to action to, to get on a wellness consult. And we go on from there, right? So once you are drafting the actual body of it, I want you to move it over to drafts in progress. Okay? Pretty, pretty simple. All right. Now let's get back over here. What do we do next? We've got our title. We've got our blog post bodies. The next thing that we want to do is generate excerpts. Now there is an auto generator for excerpts that is in our blog feature. I like using something that is a bit briefer than what that does because we want something that's going to show up really effectively. Let's say for instance, if you text a link to your blog post to someone, or if you populate this on social media. And this is also what's going to show up in the meta description of this post on, on like Google, for instance, if, if your blog post shows up in search results. So what we'll do here is we will again, use your Write With AI to create an excerpt for your blog post. And the example prompt is again, tell it who you are, tell it who you help and how. And then you ask it, summarize this blog post in one engaging sentence for use as a preview or social share. And then you paste a copy of the blog post. Right? So let me show you exactly how to do that. It is pretty straightforward. All right. So here I'm going to go and grab again, my prompt. And this is the, this is the blog excerpt prompt that I've provided to you in your checklist. I'm in the other screen right now grabbing this for you guys. Here we go. All right. I'm pasting the prompt. And here I need to paste the copy from my post. So I'm going to go ahead and create the excerpt for, I'll just do this one. Let me go edit this. I'm going to select all and copy. Here is the post copy. All right. And then I will come up here and I will also include the title copy here. All right. So I'm going to click write. And I did go over the amount of, of copy that's needed here. But I think AI understands it. And here you go. Hey. And I don't want a name tag because this is an excerpt. I'm going to remove that when I get, when I move through this. Discover the Busy Mom's Secrets to a Healthier, Happier Home with Easy Fun Wellness Tips the Whole Family Will Love. From creating sleep sanctuaries to eating the rainbow, dive into holistic practices that transform your daily routine. All right. This is a good one. All right. I can live with this. So let me come down here on this Trello card. I'm going to save this. And that's already done. And then down here, I'm going to write my excerpt. And paste. And I'm going to just delete this first part and just say discover. And I am not going to include these hashtags. That's not necessary. And we don't want Young Living as part of this either. All right. So there we go. Save. And now I have the excerpt. Pretty cool. So we're going to repeat that for all of them. And again, this is going to be the little blurb that shows up in search results as well as when you share your link on social media or via text. All right. So let's get back over here. And then the final thing we're going to do is generate our blog graphics in Canva. And this is going to be again, a pretty straightforward and simple process. Really importantly first though, it is important that we have some graphics here. Excuse me. They help to catch attention and reinforce your branding. And so if you have your branding setup in Canva, it's a really easy way to keep things consistent. So what we'll do is open the Canva template that is in your checklist. And then we'll replace any placeholder text that's there with your title and adjust the colors, fonts and images to match your personal branding. And then we're going to save these as image files that they can, will then add to our Trello board. So let me switch my share over here and I will show you guys how we can get this done. Oops. There we go. All right. So what I'm going to do here is open up the, the Canva template for you that is on your checklist. And I'm going to pop it right here. And let me just go ahead and move out of this because we are still going to be using our Trello board. So I'm going to use this template. This is already sized exactly as you need to have it. For Get Oiling and also importantly for social posting like on Facebook, for instance, and for sharing via text. So you've got some templates to start with here. You could absolutely change these. You should absolutely change these. These need to be representative of your brand colors and fonts. But these are just examples of things that you can do here. So let's just say for instance, let's pretend like I have all five. I would want you to have five of these, right? Get all of this done at once, right? Have all this done before you open up Canva and start creating the images for this stuff. So here I will, I'll just use this one as an example. This is Sippy Cups and Serenity. And I need to resize this so it stays one line. There we go. And then what was the second part of that? Let me just copy this. And then I will paste it here. Beautiful. And again, let me just adjust this beautiful matter of fact. Let me just ungroup this real quick here. let me just ungroup this real quick here. I'm gonna drag this over, because I think this could be a little bit bigger. Perfect. Okay, this image, don't love it. Let's, uh, let's find some elements that are, um, you know, busy mom. And we'll look for some photos. And we'll drag that right in here. And maybe drag it over. That looks better. I love it. Okay, so maybe you want to put your, um, your brand name here, your logo here, up to you. You can change the colors, uh, on this document to your brand colors, right? If that's your color, and maybe you want this one, uh, you know, these to be, actually, I don't want that one to be that. I want this one. The yellow, perfect. Okay, so you see where we're going with this. You can modify these to brand them. However you like, so that they fit your brand. Make those modifications, right? So this is an example of one being done. Okay, so you're gonna go through for each of your drafts in progress, right? All of these, you've first gone through, you've added your titles to these cards. Then you've gone through, you've added the body of your blog post to these cards, just like we did here, right? Using right with AI and get oiling to help you generate it. We then put that in and ask for a one-sentence excerpt, again, putting that on these cards. Final step for today is to use this Canva template and then create an image that talks about the title here, right? That shows the title of your blog post. And I want you to create this for each one of your posts. Right? Once you have all of this done, you should have five of them. Uh, we're going to, uh, download these. And PNG is a perfectly fine, uh, way to download them. I'm gonna download them all. And then what we get to do, and, and you can actually drag your image, once you've downloaded it, straight into, uh, the, the card that it corresponds with. So this one, the sippy cups and serenity one, I can just drag it right here, and you can actually see drop files to upload. There is also a place on this card, if you prefer, uh, where you can have an attachment, and you can actually go and find that file on your device, right? So here's this one. And it's automatically going to apply it to the card itself. So you can actually see that you have it all there once this is done. Okay? Now, this entire process, we're using right with AI. And we're following this one activity at a time, right? Generate my titles, then generate my copy, generate my excerpts, create my images. If we're following for all five, one step at a time, um, you know, all five in each step. Uh, then this is something that we can get done in an hour, right? This is a simple thing that we can more or less get done in an hour. So what I want you to do is spend an hour, and let's get these things done. So what we're gonna do is review that Trello board, make sure that each of your cards that you have put together and, and moved over into, uh, first, uh, gathering your ideas, right? The content ideas, and then as you are actively editing, you're moving it into the draft column, right? And we're gonna make sure that it includes your title. That thousand-word blog draft. And the excerpt. And your Canva graphic. Right? So I want you to take an hour this week and get those things together, because next week, we are going to, in an hour, set up all of those for publication. So you have a fresh blog post that goes out each week. And an email that goes out with them, and a plan for your social posts that will promote those, those, uh, blog posts as well, right? So what we got done today is planning and drafting for blog posts. We've created branded graphics for each of those posts. Again, this is all something we can get done in an hour. Uh, and then organize everything in Trello so that next week we can get everything published. And we will not only get everything published, so that you've got a blog close dropping every week, but you'll also have your emails that go out to your list that publicize these posts. And then also any social posts that you might use to help draw people toward that blog content. Right? So make sure that you're using the checklist, uh, that we've provided here for this call to complete these steps. Uh, and yeah, if you follow these steps, you can use this every single month to be able to create fresh content. Um, you can even, and I highly recommend this, if you want to set aside just a little bit more time for yourself, it is easier and faster to do an entire quarter's worth of content, so three months. Just give yourself a little bit more time. You can have your entire quarter done. Or all you need to do is show up and do the things that your business needs on a day-to-day basis. And this thing that is setting you apart, that's branding you as a go-to, getting people into the habit of seeing you as a go-to, this is gonna be a thing that's just happening for you in the background. Right? So I highly recommend, certainly take an hour this week at least to set this aside. But remember that you can scale up this activity to batch produce for an even longer period of time. Because if it takes you an hour right now, like if you were to go sit down and do this, and it takes you an hour to get a month's done, I promise you that getting two months done does not take two hours. Because the time compresses when you're doing the same type of activity. Right? So if you're only doing blog post titles, you can get twenty of those done. Copy, paste faster than you would if you broke this up into one month's activity at a time, right? So that's my, my case there for you guys to consider batching this out into a larger project for a quarter, all right? So let's get into life help and Q and A if you would like. Uh, uh, if you, actually, if you have anything that you would like to maybe see redone, if you're looking for, uh, maybe a little bit more guidance on, um, any of these particular parts. I do see some questions here, so I will get to those for sure. Uh, but if you have any, please, uh, go ahead and ask them. Let me know. Um, Allison says, I've, I've altered the prompt that fits my homeschool mom of older and grown kids demographic, but I also like to focus on the components of the fourteen-day reset, but I don't know what prompt to give. So what I would do in this instance, um, well, okay. Are you? Hmm. So the fourteen-day reset is great. Maybe what you're doing there, and like your sort of call to action that you use, uh, at the bottom of each blog post, is to transition into talking about how, um, you have a two-week process that can help them reset whatever, right? Get things back into order. The issue is, is that the fourteen-day reset is really about what's going on in your body as an individual. And what you're probably talking to your homeschool moms about is, well, homeschool stuff, right? So there's a little bit of a jump that you need to make to get from one part to the other. So perhaps when you are prompting AI, you should consider that you are talking to homeschool moms, but you need to make sure that you're saying, I help homeschool moms get what, do what, be what, right? So if you're specifying to AI that I am help, I, I help homeschool moms to, uh, manage stress, right? And to be healthier and to take care of themselves. Then transitioning to, hey, I have a fourteen-day challenge I'd love to invite you to. That's going to make a lot of sense, right? So just make sure that what you're putting in the prompt as I am a this, who does this for that. Make sure that you're talking about the fact that you help your homeschool mom to take care of herself, because she's spending all of her time taking care of everyone else. Right? And then you want to be thinking about what you're actually placing there with your call to action at the end of these blog posts. Because the fourteen-day challenge isn't something that you just say, hey, click here, go to this. Because in order for them to participate in that successfully, they've gotta go spend potentially hundreds of dollars on product. And some stranger on the internet is not just gonna do that because you said it in a blog post. Right? So we still need to look at this as a, let's have a conversation. Hey, I'd love to help you. Hop on a quick call with me. Maybe for a busy homeschool mom, you're only offering a fifteen, twenty-minute opportunity to chat with you, because that's all the time you or she has anyway. And on that call, you can say, hey, look, I would love to qualify them first, right? I would love to invite you to be a part of this, um, this challenge, uh, that I'm a part of. It just takes two weeks, and here's what it did for me. You're still going to be pointing them to a conversation with you. Because it doesn't matter how incredible the fourteen-day reset is, you still have to have a conversation. And the majority of people that are going to be finding your blog post over the long term are not gonna be people that know you. Right? Over the long term, right? Right away, it's gonna be people that know you. That's great. But these blog posts live forever. And blog posts that you create tomorrow can be still generating great traffic for you in ten years from absolute strangers who need to know who you are. And so we need to write it so that it helps them too. And an absolute stranger is very likely not just going to read a blog post and hear somebody that wrote the blog post say, this thing's really great, here's how you do it. And then I send them to a place where they have to go buy a bunch of products, right? The conversation between the two of you is what's going to make them super okay with buying a bunch of product to do this challenge. So you could take, in terms of components of the fourteen-day reset, you could be seeding it, right? In your content, you could be saying things like, um, you know, one of the things that I work with moms on is, uh, is, is adapting their morning routines so that they're taking care of themselves too. Uh, and, and so you maybe drop in a tip that you learned from the fourteen-day reset. And you can say, you know, hey, by the way, if you'd like to learn more about how this works, I'd love to chat with you. Here's where you can schedule a chat with me. Right? So instead of positioning it as, you know, I'm, I'm a wellness professional, or, you know, I, I, I offer wellness consults, you can say, I work with moms on getting, you know, um, doable routines in place inside of two weeks. Uh, here's one of the things I do in that, and reference something from the fourteen-day reset. And then say, if you want to learn more about this, um, I'd love to be able to introduce you to it. We can do that on a quick call, right? Or you shoot me a message, whatever that is, right? However, you want to do that. You can use a, a lead magnet like campaign, uh, for that. You can say, I want more information. Uh, but this would be something that, this would entail creating something new. And I really do think that a conversation is, is going to be king, no matter what, uh, where you want to introduce someone to Young Living. Do you leave the end greeting for a blog post if it writes something that has like, if it looks like, if it looks too much like an email, you're gonna want to modify it basically. Excuse me, because the blog post is, um, fundamentally different, right? It's not gonna have their name. Because the blog doesn't know, like, blog doesn't know who the person is. That's a visitor from who knows where. Um, but you will want to close the post with, uh, a call to action. Right? And that's going to be to get on that call with you, or to take advantage of some other lead magnet that you're offering and pointing them to, uh, to the landing page for that. All right. Yes, blocking time is what gets this done. Absolutely. All right, um, I helped the older generation find the health they thought was lost forever. The fourteen-day reset is a part of that. Yes, it is. Absolutely. Should I offer a Zito link scan? So I would position a Zito link scan as a, um, as a wellness consult. Because the, the Zito link is not fully automated. If somebody wants it, you have to actually go into Zito and set up their information. So you're gonna need to get their information anyway, and they're not gonna know or care, like, especially where we're talking about, like, you, you speak into a microphone and it's going, you know, or you speak, and like, the microphone is going to pick up something that's going on in your body. That is a huge gulf of information that you need to cross to get somebody to believe that, like, a Zito link scan is what they need. But if you say, let's get on a call, and I can help you identify, da-da-da-da, and I can help you with, da-da-da-da, that's what they're interested in. So just position it as a wellness consult of some kind that's maybe got an outcome that's very attractive to your person. And the how you get that done, they don't really care as much about, right? They don't, if, if you wanted your, uh, your bathroom remodeled, you would want your bathroom remodeled. You don't really care, um, what brand of drill the contractor uses, right? Uh, you may care about what the tile is made of, but you really don't care about anything else, other than that they know what they're doing. Uh, so think about it that way. The person who is looking to, um, regain aspects of their identity, uh, from when they were more well, uh, they're looking for that. And they don't like, the, what's in the scan are, you know, what the components are, or especially the name of it, right? That's just confusing. So I would just call the wellness or, or well, sorry, not a scan, a wellness consult or wellness, you know, whatever, like, uh, uh, we're gonna have a strategy caller. We're gonna, you know, have a, um, I don't know, there's a lot of ways you could brand that. It's up to you. Um, all right, uh, Lisa says, I have a website question. When I publish anything in an email webpage, uh, it looks like some kind of code. Oh, okay, um, so Lisa, um, could you send a message to support? Or I don't know, call in, you're on the call. Can we look at Lisa's account and see what's going on? Uh, Lisa, I'm gonna bring you out to chat. There is, yeah, there's, there's definitely, like, there's some kind of code happening somewhere. If you have a custom font, that's often, like, that, that's depending on how the code got put in for your custom font, that can often be the thing that's showing up weird.
Yeah, I did try that, and it seems, um, I must not have put it in the right place.
Okay. Yeah, let's, I'll, I'll pull this up real quick and we can take a look together. Okay. So let's, uh, take a look at your website. Hmm. That is not what that is. No, yeah, it is. Absolutely. Yeah. This is a font thing, isn't it?
Um, yeah, it's supposed to be Alexandra. I'm, I'm also trying to do some customized colors too, and I can't seem to find where I'm actually putting them in anymore.
Okay. Well, I am not an expert on this. I usually have to ask for help on this personally.
And they're not here today?
So my guess is that it's coming from here. Because that's actually, I can see that up here. Right?
Yeah. That's where I put it.
Mm-hmm.
And yet it didn't come in. I don't have that, um, particular font.
Just taking a quick look at that, it, that is not what needs to be in there, so it looks like it would be safe to delete it, and then, um, yeah, it deleted, see that, I would at least make the text go away. And then, um, yeah, if you wanna, I don't know if you have the original font files, this is probably something that we need to, if you haven't already, like, if it's not on the Google fonts list, then you bought a font somewhere. Um, like, is it something you can email into support, and we can take a look at that? Email the font file itself, uh, because, well, you know, the file has to be uploaded, and then we have to link it up in here too. So something must have gone wrong during this process, but we'd be certainly happy to help get that sorted out, get your font in there.
Okay, and where do I put the colors? Because that seems changed. I can't find, um, I click on there and there's nowhere to actually put a new color in.
Yeah, so you actually click on the color itself, so you go to colors and fonts, and then you've got brand colors right here. And then these actually look custom. Um, but, um, yeah, if you, if you click it, you'll actually see, depending on the device that you're on, I'm on a Mac and on Safari. So this is gonna look potentially a little different for you if you aren't. Um, but this is where you can actually go, and it'll give you the option to put in your colors.
Again there, okay. All right, I didn't see that part. All righty.
And then you could even use an eyedropper. So if you want to have several, um, if you want to have several windows open, so if you have like a palette, uh, you could have that on one side of your screen, and then you could have this on the other, and then that makes it really easy to just go grab with that eyedropper tool.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
All righty, that sounds great.
All right, good. Yeah, so just, um, uh, send a message, uh, to our team. Uh, maybe if you have the, the files for the, for the font itself, uh, you could attach those, or, or of course, the team can specify, um, what they need specifically from you, and that should be a pretty, pretty quick and easy thing to get done. But yeah, I, I, I hear you. I've, I've definitely messed that up myself more than once. All right. Awesome, AJ. You've been blogging lately as well. Excellent. Cool. All right, do we guess, you have any more questions? I'm excited to hear, um, what your inspiration is moving forward. Uh, definitely curious to hear how things are going with collecting your ideas on your swipe file. Uh, but yeah, if you, even if you But yeah, if you, even if you don't have ideas that you've grabbed from elsewhere, what you can do is just follow the instructions that we shared here today to come up with ideas for these posts. It is an important thing that you have in place to set yourself apart as a personal brand, right? What we ultimately want is for people to see us as someone that they could go to with their wellness goals, right? And see us as someone that they trust about their family, their pets themselves, about their wellness generally, right? And the way that we show up really matters, right? And it's not just, did I show up on Facebook talking about essential oils? That actually doesn't really matter, right? Not to the person who has no idea that essential oils could do anything for them. Or worse, somebody who's got misconceptions, right? So how we start the conversation matters. And people will come to see you as a go to. They will come to see you as the expert that they need to be connected to to get the results that they need. And then, of course, if you are actively prospecting, starting conversations with people, they're going to be that much more open to you when you say, hey, I could help you. Would you like to learn how? Then, my gosh, you go so much further in those conversations. You don't have to worry as much about objections. People are going to have that much more trust. So this really is a critical piece of the puzzle. I hope that you take some time to get this done. Obviously, spend an hour here sometime this week to get next month's done at minimum. If you've got a little bit more time, let's make this a slightly larger project so that you can have this knocked out and you only do it four times a year, right? Alright, and by the way, just a quick preview. We're going to have a workshop on this on this call once a quarter anyway. So why not follow along? Let's get some of these pieces in place. In a few weeks, we're actually going to be doing like a spring cleaning theme, getting ready for for the spring season to get everything built up and published. So go ahead and get familiar with this process. Because you're going to have us here as a support on an ongoing basis to help you come up with ideas and get these things produced going into the future. So what better time than now? Look forward to seeing you guys back here same time next week. And of course, in the meantime, we'll see you in our Facebook group. Reach out if you guys need any support. Thank you so much for letting us be a part of your journey, making an impact. We'll see you next week, everybody. Take care.